Good evening. This is the City of Harvey City Council meeting. Today is Monday, August 11th, 2025. The time is seven zero, seven oh eight PM. Call us needs order, but all of the members of the council please sign in and make yourselves present. Wonderful, we have a call. Next on the agenda is an invocation and pledge of allegiance for before we get there. Uh, it has been brought to my attention that one of our members had a loss in his family, uh, all in key. And so if we could be so kind and offer all the person a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an invitation and pledge of allegiance. Uh, all right, Lord, if you'd be so kind.
All hearts and minds, settle, Lord, the Savior. Father, I would come to you at this moment, Lord, thanking you for everything that you've done for us thus far, Lord, for all of your vision and protection that you provide for each and every one of us, Lord. Lord, we want to continue to thank you. And now we come asking that you usher in the Holy Spirit. Give us that comfort, give us that guidance to continue to lead in God's favor, not for our glory, but that your name be lifted up in my name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America. It is recorded, "We are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Next item, number four, presentations, there are none. Next, uh, item on the agenda, on, uh, number five, uh, manning reports. Start with the third ward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Just want to, uh, give thanks to the staff and tell you guys to be encouraged as we go through this financial state that the city is going through. Just be encouraged. I still want to always thank you guys, uh, and appreciate you guys hanging there with us as we go through these financial troubles that we have. This is not something that we have created on our own. This is something we inherited. So I hope to continue to see you guys when we get to the end of this, which is gonna be a hard little struggle beginning there. Not what we used to be, not what we want to be, but we got what we used to be. So with that being said, thank you, okay.
Next on the, um, report is the second ward.
Good evening, Second Ward in the City of Harvey. I want to begin by sharing a matter of personal and public concern. Recently, Mayor Clark and me, we emailed for a meeting digitally, uh, and I requested if we could have a meeting. Uh, and you did a mail that evening. You said that we could meet, uh, face to face. And I'm requesting to you in a public, uh, forum is that we meet digitally with my arrest, with my mother's arrest. I just don't feel safe just yet, uh, to sit down and have that meeting with you. So if you'd be so kind in the most collaborative way, uh, to further discuss what we need to do as it relates to more than 10% of the workforce getting laid off. I'm also publicly and for the record asking that the city host the citywide forum. I see that we're having the upcoming meeting, uh, to express public concern, but if there could be a main focus around public safety and financial transparency, I believe that these are two of the most pressing concerns for Harvey residents. And you all deserve a safe space, open conversation and dialogue where questions can be heard and answers be provided on public safety. You know, I was alarmed when I woke up to the ABC 7 news that a friend of mine's nephew had been murdered here on deathplains. I've been doing this gambling for a long time and it's no secret, you know, public safety is moving on across America at large. We need support, we need assistance. But right here in the City of Harvey, we can do more just by providing the, the much needed conversation. We know it's a long haul to, to get the work done, right? We understand the rearview of the past administration, but what we have to focus in on is one issue. What's our forward contingency plan to, to have unique answers for the residents? That's all the residents in here want to know. They want an answer to a question without feeling they're going through a suffrage march to get a solution. I just also want to further echo the financial transparency. Mayor Clark, I, you know, have messaged you regarding this settlement agreement. And knowing that 10% was laid off, some people are out here paying $2,500 a month, $20,000 annually. I'd like to ask, where is that money gone? Uh, we are desperately, we're first class residents living in a third world neighborhood. Do you all hear me? We are first class residents living in a third world neighborhood. And the collaborative approach, a strategic approach is most necessary. And sometimes that just comes with having dialogue and conversations. There are no doubt questions. City of Harvey, meet me at 15446 South Lexington, where I back the school event. You all came last year, Mayor. He told me he invites you out again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, is fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to, um, thank everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, we appreciate, we really appreciate the day acknowledging, you know, the loss of my brother. I have my, um, nephew here. When you want to raise your hand, right here, you've been hanging with me the weekend and, um, we've been having us a good time, just so, you know, really emotional time right now, so. Um, with that being said, I want to first start off with the gun violence that we have been having in the city recently. We have new gangs are establishing themselves in our town. I think Harvey is, excuse the way I said, but I think would, would be into a certain point, we've been punked out. Well, what I mean by that is people come here, they dump stuff all over. Um, we got vacant houses, people be squatting houses. Um, everything that somebody want to do, it seem like they come to Harvey and do it, you know? And we have to be able to stop that reputation. And when it comes to this gun violence, when it comes to our city council, cause if you pay attention, the four entities that we have, we have the library district, the school district, the park district and the city. And between all four, it's always some type of unevenness that's going on around the city. I think we need to set the example first and to show that regardless of how you have feel about the person, you know, we have a city that we have to take care of and mostly we cannot teach these young youths about gang violence and fighting against each other. If we can't set an example, then we can't get along ourselves, you know? We have to set that tone and then we can have a talk and we can have an ear to talk to somebody and tell somebody what they shouldn't be out there doing when we out there doing things just as bad, you know? So I think that's something that really, um, need to be, um, addressed. I'm also concerned about the, um, recent layoffs that we had with the city and where's the city standing at. I'm willing to get out, out here and help and do the best I can, but our city is, is really looking pretty bad right now. And we are in a situation that this needs to be addressed to get things going in the right direction. To show we can all help each other, what suggestions we have in the center for everybody to put their Steve's on up. So finish with that. I will be having a public safety meeting this Wednesday, uh, hosted with me and all the ones chatting. I passed out supplies, so if anybody can get one, please, you know, let me know. And I encourage y'all to come on out to give your concerns and suggestions and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Next is the fifth ward.
Thanks, sir. I also like to thank all the residents that took the time to be here today. Uh, I want to also just kind of give a nice prayer before I believe that we have to give honor, our honors due. And to each and every one of our Harvey kids, I want to tell you, thank you. Uh, I believe that I have so many examples from working with each and every one of you. The duties assigned to you that can thrown out of the window and you all completely go beyond the call of duty. Uh, I hate to use names, but I have to say this to you, thank you, brother. Ms. Davis, thank you. Pastor Harris, thank you. Rick Sucker, thank you. Most importantly, I want to say this, but I've said it prior, uh, Mayor Clark, I thank you. It doesn't matter what time of day that a call, uh, he's there. And many times it's, okay, where you at? And he pulls up. We have to understand something that we, we, if we're going to be successful here, we can't stick to our limits. I, I'm definitely telling you, if we're going to be successful here, we have to have people around us that are willing to say, okay, how do we solve the problem? Because we may not be able to completely erase the problem, but we can make it do it. And I've seen that on many occasions where you can't tear down a house in such and such, but we're gonna make it safe and we're gonna make sure it's clean until we can. Uh, yeah, we cannot repair the whole street. I'm sorry that you, you know, you had to run over there or your kids have to deal with that when they're trying to ride a bike on the sidewalk. But what we can do is that we can do a good patchwork and make it safe. We're doing what we can until we can do what we want. And each and every one of you have shown that over, over again, for real. Thank you. When residents call, the report is always that they're getting more than what they expected. And that's what we need. So we're gonna do what we can do until we do what we want to do. I want to thank all the residents that came out for our fifth ward meeting on August 2nd. That was so great to see everyone out, um, and then just get back in touch with what's going on, with city business and what we're looking to do, uh, not just now, but also from six. Got a lot of good input from you all. Most importantly, I'm starting to see residents are really understanding the issues and what it takes to solve them. And that's why they are becoming a little bit more patient because they can see that we are doing something. We're not just ignoring it. It may not be the best thing, but we're doing the right thing that we can do right now.
Thank you. Next is the sixth ward.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Uh, welcome residents from the great City of Harvey. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Glad to see some residents here from the great sixth ward. I think it's all been terrible, and I've been agreeing. Uh, what I'd like to start is, first of all, on Saturday, I had two residents to deceased. Uh, Mr. Welch, Gibson Welch, from, uh, Centers, uh, Titten Street. Uh, he passed, he had been battling with cancer for some time and, uh, may God rest his soul, may he rest in peace. And my friend and my brother, Mary, you may know him, uh, brother Sylvester Ellis, he worked at LA Two, yes, he passed Saturday. Uh, he had severe dementia and his wife brought him home and he had been in hospice. That being said, uh, my heart goes out to the family and I will be doing a resolution for the City of Harvey on behalf of these families. Without sounding redundant, I'd like to thank the administrative staff as well. Uh, without letting the cat out of the bag, we had a very productive meeting with South Suburban College, and I'm not going to say too much, but there will be a, uh, recycling facility where most of the residents are able to bring out all of their hazardous materials, chemicals, tires, batteries and that kind of thing. And right now it's still tentative. We haven't agreed anything, but it was a very productive meeting and Mr. Second was in there. Uh, Ms. Davis was involved, Mr. Ramona helped set it up and the mayor was very instrumental in, uh, us getting this thing done. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the City of Harvey, uh, August 2nd on the, the fight night where we acknowledged all our first responders and our police departments. It was a very festive occasion. There was a lot of activities and a lot of giveaways for kids and I think it made everybody happy. On August the 18th. Now, you know, I adopted an elementary school, Bryan Elementary, uh, on 147th and Broadway. And I will be doing a toy giveaway, uh, at the end of the school day. I was gonna do it at the beginning of the day, but it's the first day. And if I give out toys, it's gonna just cause a distraction for all the kids and nobody's gonna get nothing done, even if it is the first day. So after school, uh, anybody that's associated with Bryan Elementary School, I will be out giving out, uh, toys and school supplies and that kind of thing. And once again, uh, my phone number is area code seven zero eight five one six two two seven six. And I'm always available. I'm always transparent. I answer the phone every single time. And without sounding redundant, you will not get a voicemail. I answer every call. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. First ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Please talk to your microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say last week was an amazing week on Broadway. Yep, right in front of this office, um, the police department did an outstanding job on, uh, National Night Out. It was very well attended. The following day, Restoration Ministries had an event, was the art show. Now, I don't know if anyone attended, but there was over a hundred, 150 people and I happened to go in a blur. And I was amazed. People from Homewood, people from South Island, throughout our communities here in Harvey, participating in this event. It was beautiful. In case you don't know, Restoration Ministries offers art classes, dance classes, jazz band, ballerina for $10 a semester. And it is really amazing. It was a fun-filled night. We were all outside. I took pictures. It was a beautiful night. I was very excited. Um, here, right here in Harvey and our sister communities coming to visit us. I want to echo some sentiments on, uh, what the previous Autumn Alderman personality had said. The third world neighborhood. Oh my God, that took me back to Nikki Graves. If anyone remembers Nikki Graves, used to always call Harvey as the ghetto. You know what? We're not the ghetto and we're not a third world, uh, neighborhood. We are first class, just as Alderman called me had said. If we adapt to that mentality, then we will be working very diligently to become a good neighbors. Last week, no, I just take a bet, Saturday, right down the street from my house, Alderman Keys talked about the violence. I live on Union Street. This was occurred on Emerald. There was a party, over 150 people in attendance to get a house party. Now, thank God there was no violence, but nevertheless, it's hot out there, people are drinking, violence can occur. We have violence throughout the South Suburbs, in every community. We have to be watchful. It's not the police department, it's not the mayor, because I got to tell you, we have a phenomenal police department. Public safety, as, as people, uh, talked about, absolutely. They are, they are spearheading a public, uh, public safety meeting. The town meetings. If you have questions, as, as, um, Alderman, uh, Pope had mentioned, come to the town meetings. The mayor calls these every so often. Quarter. And all your questions can be answered. So you are our top priority and yes, we are first class. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for their reports. Next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. It is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items in any other city in business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience and no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issued. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium and state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No speaker may donate his or her time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time and council cannot engage in conversation of public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours. Um, as I have previously discussed in other meetings, talking about specifically the attacks, the venom, the vitriol that seem to take place in, in public comment, I think it forces me, in my opinion, to make sure that I understand. While people have freedom of speech to say what they choose regarding, um, ethical issues in the city, it does not necessarily mean that what they are saying is true. This is their opinion, uh, and they have a right to it and we are here to hear it. That being said, when I call your name, please step forth. Um, it is Reverend M. King Jr., followed by Chappelle Hooks.
Uh, Reverend King, Reverend King, 268, I was right right there, hold on. Uh, I was waking up in my sleep Sunday, early three o'clock Sunday morning by a shooting. Before my bed, I was walked out of my bed by a high powered weapon that had fired. And down the street, a neighbor and a man, a white redneck, he was blown to pieces. You can see it on YouTube. And on that same street, on that same street, there is my neighbor across the street says she's going to move out of Harvey. The reason she's going to move out of Harvey, first of all, she bought a house in Harvey about three years ago with the idea of having a nice place, not in the city. And so now she's there, they broke into her house and they also tried to steal her car. But what she's really mad about is that the Harvey police showed up 17 minutes late while the neighbors said that they were out there, 17 minutes late. And by the time they got there, it was all over. My suggestion for the Harvey police is, since I was a chief years ago in Phoenix, is to station somebody on the weekends, on those Sunday nights and things, when things are happening. Why should it take you 17 minutes to get to a place when you're supposed to be stationed in all six wards? Now, something is wrong with that picture. I don't care how many officers you've put in here for this, but there's not enough officers on the street. And yes, I'm a well-respected, I'm a well-respected officer, cause I am not going to be waking out of my bed and my wife and I and all my kids in danger for getting shot because people are late, they come there late. And I did get footage. I had told the officer I couldn't get enough footage, the right footage, because the video didn't come out good. I did see some flash, but I didn't get the right footage. But here's what I'm telling you. We can't have this. And I'll tell you something, there was some promises made, some promises made by the individual. They said, lower, uh, lower the minimum bill from $59 to $39. You only pay for water you use. Make deals more transparent so you can calculate your own bill. Lower your current water rate from 78% to 5.506. Lower your current sewer fee from $10 to $7.50. Remove the $2 administration fee, which is still sitting there long after the campaign. Lower the connection fees from $100 to $25. Last time I was at City Hall, there was an 80 something year old woman trying to get her water turned on. And the lady right over here, she knows who I am. She saw me, right? And I paid for that lady's water bill. And why? Because they were overcharging the 80 something year old woman $300 for one month. You tell me what kind of city hall, are they checking anything? Are they checking what the citizens are doing? Are they really taking care of the seniors or are they stripping them for money? Because what I just see right now, they're stealing for the money. All you inspectors and all you people that's supposed to do your job, you love to inspect those meetings. And to support the police, I say support them, but at the same time, a lot of police patrols certain areas at certain weekends and things. I'm tired and sick of leaving this meeting every time I come here and watch a prostitute, the same one is still operating out there. And I come here and I'm being told that they moved out the street, but they missed one. Cause I see her every time I come home. And I'm telling you, I'm sick of it. The sixth ward is a piece of garbage.
Thank you very much. Next is Chappelle Hooks, followed by Ryan Zemwelski.
Hello, Harvey. My name is Chappelle Hooks. I am, uh, Harvey, uh, library trustee since 2023. Um, so let's talk about the gun violence. Which gun violence has been going on everywhere for, forever. It just is, uh, sad that when you had automatic, um, comics. Alderman Rogers, you didn't mention anything about the mass shooting and the shooting in front of Melville King's house. Um, those seven people got shot, including the four year old boy. Um, what, the two people that was the suspects, one was killed and one was shot. None of that. Y'all ain't telling the people nothing. Then y'all, the police get up there and, and do a little press conference and then you clearly say that y'all been knew who did it. Y'all know who doing this stuff and y'all letting them, right? Go all around through Harvey, shooting and killing people. So that means that you all are allowing this to happen. There is no such thing as that, oh, well, the police can't stop it. No, yes, you can, because if you stated, and I believe it was you, Charles, said that, and y'all gave the addresses, the dates, the times and, and all this stuff, y'all knew all this. Why y'all ain't stop? You got Kentate, he was killed on her birthday. That's right there, right behind where he stay at on, on what, Kalina, 157th and Kalina. The other little girl just got Willow got shot. I mean, you got all these people and these innocent kids that's been killed, had nothing to do with the clubs since y'all closed down the, the clubs, had nothing to do with that. We losing businesses. You talking about all this money. I mean, I, what, what y'all gonna do? What, just tell everybody what y'all gonna do, because this here don't make sense. Yeah, we first class, we have. How are we first class? But y'all show got these 100 screen TVs sitting up here, talking about we broke, ain't got no money. Hassan got away with $6 million, um, in back taxes. And I hear all the women sniff, they mention nothing about that when y'all was talking about the $6 million y'all ain't get. What happened to that? What y'all gonna do? I mean, y'all sitting up here talking all this stuff about what, what's good and giving all these people kudos. I can't see how and where, where, where's the showing at? Them people been, you might as well say they been laid off because they ain't been doing their jobs. Harvey been looking like God. So y'all need to do something about all this.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Zemwelski, followed by Ruby Donahue.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Zemwelski. I'm with the Harvey Historical Society and resident Harvey. On July 14th, 2025, four people were the victims of a mob action in Harvey led by Jethadi Brown and his associates Alicia Spikes, Rahim Sharx, Keisha Stokes and Stringer Harris. They attacked Amir Shakur and his daughter first, fracturing his eye socket and dislocating his finger. Jeth then assaulted Beth McBride as she tried to stop Jeth's attacks. Later, Keisha Stokes, niece of Alderman Teleny Smith, assaulted and battered me because she didn't like that I was filming the incident which occurred in public. What were Alderman Smith and her niece doing at the crime scene that was so secret that she brutally attacked me, trying to destroy my phone, so it would not report what they're doing? Why did Harvey police allow Jeth and his boys to play the scene not once, but twice? Why was Stringer Harris not arrested and charged? Why were they all sent home after a few hours like kids in detention without being properly arrested, booked or charged? Why were Jeths and Keisha's vehicles not towed while Harvey police routinely tow innocent people's cars just to get cash out of them? Why haven't charges been filed in Cook County Circuit Court? Why are Mayor Clark and Harvey police protecting those causing violence in our community? We want answers and we want them now. On July 28th, 2025, I reported to Harvey police that Jethadi Brown had violated my stalking no contact order. I told Officer Griffin I expected Harvey police to arrest Mr. Brown in accordance with Illinois law, which states according to the Illinois Domestic Violence Act 750- law, which states according to the Illinois Domestic Violence Act 750LCS 60/223, a law enforcement officer shall arrest the respondent when the officer has probable cause to believe the respondent has violated an order of protection. On August 7th, I spoke via phone to Detective McGaughan, who's in the back, and once again said I did not feel safe and I expected Harvey police to enforce the law and arrest Mr. Brown immediately. However, as you can see, Mr. Brown sits in this chamber and still has not been arrested. We've seen the videos where Jed's driving around the city with Mayor Clark, as Mayor Clark helping Jedidiah Brown evade the law using our police. This is crazy. On August 2nd and 3rd, there were shootings in North Harvey. Eight were shot, three were killed, and a four year old child was injured. As others have said, why have we not heard about this before? Why is it the mayor, why isn't Alderman, Alderman Rogers speaking out about this? This is just, it's all crazy. But the number one point I want to make is that Jedidiah Brown should have been arrested July 28th. So if you don't see that happening tonight, feel free to reach out to me, you can be a witness when we go back to court. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ruby Downey, followed by Jedidiah Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy that everyone, that we have a compliment, a participant step or to see exactly what is happening in here in Harvey and try to communicate more or less current the problems that we seem to be having. Many of these things are occurring are because we don't have the support of the neighborhood. They go about, and I'm going to say they enjoy it. Everything cannot be blamed on the administration because we need help. We need help. And I'm going to tell you why. Because you have people that are actually squatters, right here, coming right under your eyes. They don't belong in Harvey. They never have, they never will, do anything to flourish, but they will actually blame everyone but themselves. So that is why I got up here to say this, but I had something written down, but it came to my mind that these things have happened to me. And I'm going to say that the building department and everything has reached out in many instances to try and curtail some of the things that have been occurring, but the, the, the rate of viability that is needed is not here. You need to work together. They're not doing that. You're cocooning yourselves to the extent that we are not really flourishing, as you may say, because we have no community activities. It is absolutely ridiculous. I know our time is almost over, but I did want to say this. The building department is doing, they've worked very hard, but the squatter situation in Harvey has become more imminent and blatantly open. They will walk behind you. I've seen it done and asked Judd into me on both sides of my home, and I've been there almost thirty-seven years. Many of these people are not registered as residents, renters, or homeowners in Harvey, certainly not taxpayers. The situation is much more pronounced when our weather has been humid and hot and the temperature, of course, has escalated. They are normal, uh, they are normally choosing cables and houses that are located in areas that are being well protected.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Thank you very much, and I did what you did. Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
We need help.
Next up is Jedidiah Brown.
Okay. Hey, uh, city of Harvey, jealousy is not rational because you got a bond and some check, but the point here is Jedidiah needs to be arrested. But moving past that, what I want to say is, uh, I remain shocked that, um, I was cut off with the time of three minutes when I asked the person who invited me here, our owner, Judd, what has happened now that I've come here and I'm trying to figure out what's going on according to what you said, and I found it. But the treatment that I'm receiving from your base, your supporters, is really, really concerning to me. But I'm not going to park there because there's so many important things that need to be addressed. Yes, but that's important. Court orders, threats, lies, internet stuff, all of that is important just because the person doesn't agree. And so what I have looked for was proof that I have yet to find and you have yet to provide. But it's okay, we'll move past. So what I want to say to the city of Harvey is that with everything that's going on in this country, what we're doing here is really a waste of time because we should be, as a community of people, coming together. Because if you look at what's happening on the national stage, what we're doing here is just a distraction.
Can we please refrain from commenting when the public comment or this topic?
Okay. It's just a distraction and I'm really made up of my mind and I'm going to focus on what's important. Uh, and I, and I wanted to be clear here, Harvey, I am here to figure out what's going on and to be as much of an asset as possible. And so today, I want to be clear that what you are on a dinner with, with this ten percent of employees losing their job, we all saw that coming, but it's still worse coming down the pipe if we don't get a hold of reality and change the way we're operating. And what do I mean by that? The connection rates of this county, you will see that Harvey is number three as it relates to the community that collects as low as taxes. And I want to say this to the owner woman who brought me here, in your specific ward, All-Town Bus Company and Christ One Auto, and I think DNA Style have not paid their taxes. That will contribute to people being laid off. This is not a city enforcement issue, it's a county enforcement issue. And if the all the people came together to address the fact that literally Harvey is the number three, number, number three city in the county that's not getting its taxes, you probably will see a better result. Or the fact that literally every time you get a grant, the control, the tax and percentage of those taxes. Now, you're in public safety and I'm saying to you, as I'm saying to all, literally, let's be genuine, because police services are imperil, water provision is imperil, toilet protection is imperil, and so many other things. So stop playing internet games, let's organize, protest. You cannot arrest somebody under just knowledge. You gotta have evidence and there's a double jeopardy clause. Police, you're doing a great job. So many things I wish I could say, but I bless you.
It would be nice if we could all be respectful of each other. I will say that when I read the initial statement for public comment, I'd say in that is that we need to be courteous and respectful at all times. Now, either we can apply that over the whole group and we all get it, or we don't apply it at all. I didn't pick who signed up for public comment. And even with this display that we just had, I didn't really stop very, I want to see where it was going to go. But people are going to get up and they're going to say things. They're going to say things about me, they're going to say things about others. I don't think that they should. I honestly don't. I think that it is uncouth and it's total bad taste. But it seems like it's still continuing. Couple weeks ago, almost a month ago, I sat here and I tried to offer an olive branch and tried to say, hey, but let's break down the vitriol. I know everybody's, people got their opinions and that is okay. And honestly, I love, um, but we have to make sure that either we're going to do it one way or we're not going to do it at all. So if we want things to get out of control and we want people to see us that way, that's the way it will be. If we want to keep ourselves under control and move this city forward, we can do that too. I believe in each and every one of us and our abilities to do so. Sometimes, yes. Lord knows emotions will take over and passions will get high, but nevertheless, we still have to be respectful of each other. So this is to be all the persons. First of all, I would appreciate it to cheer if you would not have discussions back and forth with those who are making public comment. But to those who are engaging in public comment, you know, you can do a little bit better too, because we can do much better than how we're talking to and treating each other. And y'all talk about Harvey World and stuff like that, a lot of stuff y'all saying, y'all wouldn't say in those faces, but you say it here and you think it's okay. The problem that we have is that people are watching. And I, and I've said it before and I've said it again, you never know if those people who are watching are thinking. One of the strangest things that I saw in my lifetime was a guy by the name of John Lynn, the assassin. And when his assassin was, was apprehended, you know what he said, the reason why he did what he did? Does anybody know why, why he said he did what he did? He said he read a book called The Catcher in the Rye. And for some odd reason, that book told him that he needed to go and assassinate John It just shows that the mental instability is real. And sometimes when we put this venom and vitriol out here, we may not even mean it really for each other because, you know, we family, and family do that sometimes. But there are other people who are paying attention. There are people who travel here from Nebraska, travel here from Canada, because they see this on Facebook and YouTube and they don't quite understand what's going on. We don't want people to get hurt. I'm going to say it again, we don't want people to get hurt. So please, if nothing else, when you, when you make your public comments and when you're listening to the public comments, let's just try to step back for a minute and think of the broader impacts of what we're seeing and what we're experiencing. Okay? I thank you very much for listening. Next is our departmental reports. First up will be our city administrator, Corinne Davis. Before we do so, the, uh, the reason why we do these reports is because we, we want to be more transparent and we're working on being more transparent with our constituents. We want you to know what is happening in the city. We want you to know the work that has been done on your behalf. While there are some that believe that we should always talk about committee and everything that we do, which I will say honestly, I, I agree with that, but people have the rights of their own opinions. Donald Trump doesn't come and knock on my door and ask if it's okay for him to pass the big beautiful bill. And Governor Priska doesn't come to the city of Harvey and ask us if it's okay for him to sign the squatters law. And our state reps and our state senators don't come here and ask us if it's okay for them to do the work and pass the myriad of bills that they passed, not if they do that in the county. The reason why we allow them to do what they do is because we have elected them. They are our elected officials. And so as a result, we have a certain responsibility. And once again, I said it before, I believe the council has done a good job overall in that. But what we want you to understand is what our departments are doing for you, what they are dealing with, the problems and the challenges that they are facing, and how they are overcoming those issues that is making a better city, definitely. Um, and we have people who can testify to that. So that being said, we'll start our departmental court reports and then we should just follow as the agenda says for all of our departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, here at City Council. I'm pleased to report that we are on track to meet our goals right at the end of the year. We've made strong progress across several areas. I want to take a moment to highlight the work that has been done to improve our city as an operator. To begin, we started the process of digitizing our services. It means we're moving away from outdated paper systems and transitioning into a more modern, digital approach. This shift has helped our departments work better together, improve service delivery, and make things easier, faster for residents. A great example of this is building a special services department, which has streamlined the business license process earlier this year. What used to take longer is now much quicker, more consistent, and thus progress. We've also launched new online tools for the public. You can now pay your citations online. You can request police reports. All is available on our website, cityofharveyil.gov. Infrastructure. We're prioritizing improvements to streetlights, curb sidewalks, and public service. I'm expect, um, I'm excited to announce that the sidewalk repairs on 150th First Street between Ashland and Marfield will start soon. We're waiting on the final confirmation from the contractor and we'll start seeing developments To support future projects, we're putting major focus on securing grant funding to make sure we're getting the financial help we need to improve the city without putting extra burden on the residents. Another big step we've taken is updating our municipal code. Many of our codes lost or outdated. We're going through them piece by piece. This will help us run more smoothly, eliminate confusion, and build trust within the community. The next topic I would like to talk about is the tax collection rate. The tax collection revenue, um, some businesses have operated in the city way too long without paying the property taxes. This has been a major impact on our, um, the staff departments, keeps, uh, city services running at its full strength. In other communities, approximately eighty percent of their budget relies on tax revenue. Uh, on the Cook County Treasurer's website, you will see the tax collection rate is close to fifty-two percent for Harvey residents. In other communities, they are closer to eighty, eighty-two percent. To tackle this issue, we're updating our municipal code and internal processes to Our goal is simple, one of our goals are simple. We're just trying to get properties back on the tax roll and hold everyone accountable, especially those who avoided paying property taxes for decades. That's coming to an end. We're also reviewing and updating all municipal contracts and agreements. That's all about accountability. One of... We want to make sure every agreement we enter are truly in the interest of our residential party. And we were trying to make it top priority to make sure all departments follow clear processes and procedures. When everyone is working together, we follow the same playbook, the city runs faster. And Mayor DeHans is on board.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda.
Mayor, Councilman, and residents. I'm here today to provide an update on the recent crime statistics during the month of July two thousand twenty-five. In addition to three cases currently being handled by the Harvey Police Department, which began with a star assault. In July two thousand twenty-five, the Harvey Police Department Patrol Division responded to a total of two thousand two hundred and twenty-five calls for service. Their efforts resulted in two hundred and seventy-three general case reports, fifty-six misdemeanor arrests, four felony arrests, three hundred and eighty-five parking citations, forty movement violations, four warrants, forty-six victims total, thirty-seven reported accidents, and eight firearms recovered. The Harvey Police Department's Investigations Division is currently conducting three significant criminal investigations. On August second, two thousand twenty-five, a tragic shooting occurred at a house party located in one four four five nine Des Plaines. Several individuals were struck, including a four-year-old child who thankfully is now recovering. We're maintaining close communication with the family and are committed to supporting anyone who's different time. Our investigation identified two suspects, Charles Lipsy of Markham and DeJuan Shepherd of Hagerford. These individuals arrived at the party in a vehicle and opened fire on the crowd outside. One attendee of valid concealed carry license over, returning fire in self-defense, striking Mr. Shepherd. Two additional suspects who have been identified fled the scene in a stolen vehicle which was later recovered nearby. Mr. Lipsy was shot dead during the incident and Mr. Shepherd sustained gunshot wounds to the head and leg. We are fully committed to bringing any remaining offenders into custody using every available. Using every available resource, tool and technology that are disposed. Let me be clear. This incident of violence stems from a longstanding conflict among the few individuals with the disruptive history. These acts do not represent a lawless community, but rather reckless and dangerous behavior by individuals who show no regard for life. The Harvey Police Department Investigations Division is also investigating. My apologies. These acts do not represent a lawless community, but rather reckless and dangerous behavior by individuals who show no regard for life. When a four-year-old child is shot, we should all be outraged. This is not a time for politics or self-serving agendas. It is time for our community to unite, work alongside law enforcement and find ways to prevent such tragedies from reoccurring. Addressing this issue requires a joint effort beyond just policing. We recognize that people will continue to hold parties, but we urge everybody to do so responsibly. If you know individuals who have conflicts with certain groups, please discourage them. Please discourage their participation in different festivities. Speak with your authority. And while it's not required, it would help if you would notify the Harvey Police Department if you plan to host a large gathering. This allows for the Police Department to increase patrols and ensure safety. We are not omnipresent, but with your cooperation, we can better prepare and respond accordingly. I am calling on all all the persons, residents and the Harvey Police Department to actively collaborate immediately. My team in conjunction with the mayor's office has already developed a saturation patrol plan to remove these individuals intent on disrupting our city's peace. A peace mean community state for granted. The city of Harvey has too long been treated as a weak target with offenders thinking they can commit crime in the city and escape once they cross into neighboring communities, South Holland, Homewood and others. That must end that. For weeks I've been asked, Chief, what are you gonna do? Again, it's not just a law enforcement approach to solving these type of issues. We must work collaboratively together. We have already been in contact with violence prevention groups and faith-based leaders. Which will notice the heavier police presence in the neighborhoods, including walk-in talks and traffic stops. We will be identifying individuals who do not belong here. And those who are traveling through this city with illegal firearms and narcotics contraband is the warning to use expressways to go around the city department because we will be petting. And we will not leave out the others who are creating harm to our city. The Harvey Police Department is serious about enforcing the law. Again, we will pull you over, we will tow your vehicle and we will arrest those who act foolish within our city and want to cause violence. These increased patrols will include investigators, tactical teams and command staff actively engaging the neighborhoods. We will be knocking on doors, gathering information. If you want this to stop, we need the community's help. If you witness something suspicious, please speak up. We cannot fix what we do not know. Tips can be reported anonymously to seven zero eight, seven one three, four eight nine nine. Again, that number is seven zero eight, seven one three, four eight nine nine, or you can email crime tips at thecityofharvey.io.gov. The Harvey Police Department Division is currently, the Harvey Police Department's Investigations Division is currently investigating the shooting death of a twenty-eight-year-old male from Chicago. On August third, at approximately four thirty-nine AM, the victim was shot and killed while sitting inside of a vehicle parked at two three five Kuyanet Boulevard. A female passenger was present during the incident, fortunately remained uninjured. The investigations link to the same incident that occurred at one four four five nine Des Plaines. While we have identified the individual we are searching for, we strongly encourage anyone with information about this case to come forward. Your assistance is vital in helping us remain justice. If you have any information, please contact, again, the Harvey Police Department at seven zero eight, seven one three, four eight nine nine. You can remain anonymous, or you can email crime tips at thecityofharvey.io.gov. The Harvey Police Department's Investigation Division is also investigating the stabbing of Desmond Carter, a twenty-six-year-old male from Chicago, Illinois. Mr. Carter was stabbed to death on August third, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately eleven forty-nine PM at two seven three East one hundred sixty-third Street in the first ward. Mr. Carter was at a gathering with others, partying, drinking and consuming drugs. And according to witnesses, Mr. Carter got into an argument with the courtney Aschler. Upon Mr. Desmond's attempt to leave Mr. Aschler following him outside, at this time, Mr. Desmond was stabbed in the chest with a pair of scissors. Investigators recovered surveillance footage and still images of the offender walking away from the scene as Mr. Carter fell to the ground and bled to death. The Assistant State Attorney's Office conducted interviews and reviewed body-on-camera footage and reports, charged with a current penalty. As some of you can tell, a number of individuals involved in these incidents, whether it be victims or offenders, are not residents of the city of Harvey or come from other communities. This should be concerning because it impacts all of us, including residents, community members and employees. It's critical that we unite and take a firm stance against such behaviors. We must clearly state that enough is enough and work collaboratively to ensure the safety and well-being of our community. While there are narratives suggesting the crime is rampant out of control in this city. The facts demonstrate otherwise. In fact, we have observed a significant decrease in crime over the past few years. Since two thousand twenty, we've seen a significant drop in homicides by sixty-eight percent alone. Robbers have decreased by seventy-six percent. Burglars have decreased by seventy-eight percent. We have noticed an increase in shots fired incidents in the city. We've taken proactive measures by installing gunshot detection systems through the city as well as license plate reader technology. To help not just locate shooting incidents faster, but also pinpoint vehicles and people that are in the area during these occurrences. One of the ways this technology is helping specifically during the one hundred forty-fourth Des Plaines incident. We were able to identify a vehicle that has been in the area during several shootings over the course of the last two weeks. We have now made the locate the vehicle, identify the driver and are actively looking to bring that person into proportion. But again, I want to stress it. You know, all of this is going on, all of this violence that you guys claim is happening within the city, which is not. It's a collaborative effort amongst the community and the Police Department. So when you say it's only on the Police Department to figure this thing out, it's not. It's not. It's on us as a community to come together and figure out the root cause of this violence that's happening. And my team are working hard, my team is working hard with the mayor's office to ensure that we work with violence prevention groups, that we work with faith-based leaders and organizations to make sure we don't just talk, we have to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That stuff is a fire department. Well, before we go. To fire report, let me also add on to that. That report. That. In the, in the village of South Holland, on that same day that we're talking about where there was some, people shot on, at Des Plaines. There was a, I think it was sixteen-year-old that was shot several times and killed in the dirt in South Holland. I'm proud of our police force because. That was a tragic, tragic event for that community. But as they were trying to find the killer of that particular young man, they reached out to the city of Harvey. The city of Harvey was already going through its own issues because we had what happened on that particular day. And we were dealing with, how many was it? Seven? Eight, it was eight, eight in total on that particular day. Even though we're not a part of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. And we're not a part of the Major Crimes Task Force, has nothing to do with this administration. It has to do with the inequities, in my opinion, in the Southland on how they treat communities. Because this, this particular administration and this particular chief. Has been inquiring about belonging to the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. For, on several occasions for several years. But even though we have asked to be allowed to participate, we have been told, what, Chief? No. Now, one of the ways that you can help to prevent and to prevent some of these situations from happening. And one of the ways that you can help. That one could help. Us in solving these crimes is to be able to have communities working together. And that is having the Major Crimes Task Force in the city of Harvey work together to solve crimes. Even though they won't allow us to be a part of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. The South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force came to the Harvey Police Department asking for information to solve this crime in South Holland. Now I want you to understand because my sympathy goes out to the family. Okay, just like it does for those who have something here in our community. But you won't help us, but you want us to help you. And then when I brought it, I'll tell you, because I brought it to some of their attention, because some of the mayor, one of the mayors called me up. And asked, you know, if I could get our police force to help them with solving the crime. But there was still no offer to help us. Repeat again, they wanted us to help them. But they really weren't interested in helping us. We had three people perish on that day. A total of eight wounded. And the main reason some of this stuff is happening is because of the things that, you know, some people don't like me to do. So I'm about to, I'm about to hit the holy grail, okay? Because of the previous administration. Because we had a police department that was raided twice by the federal government and once by the state. And that carries, and it continually carries over and over again. But at the end of the day, it came to us to help. And I'm proud of our police force and I'm proud of the work that you have done. I'm proud of the cases that you have closed. Because even when we have those situations. It used to be where you would hear that X Y Z happened in somewhere in Harvey. And that's all you hear. Well, now you hear it, X Y Z happened in Harvey and we got somebody in custody. A B C is happening in Harvey and now we have somebody in custody. Somebody is being charged. And so at the end of the day, the closure rate, in addition to the crimes going down, the closure rate is going up. Ain't that right, my guy? Closure rate is going up. And so at the end of the day, they can ask us to help, but they still don't want to help us. So this might not be the best song, but. All I got to say is that they don't really care about us. Because they do what they want to do and they're okay with using our resources. But they're not okay with us using theirs. And that needs to change. And I'm saying this specifically for all of you in the audience, for those of you who may view this at a later date. But I'm specifically saying it to those who are a part of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. We are sick and tired of being left out. And we're sick and tired of the excuses. We're sick and tired of that. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. For the month of July, the Harvey Fire Department responded to a hundred forty-one calls, twenty-six were related to fire, thirty was EMS calls, twelve was contention calls, six was hazards conditions, sixty was false alarms, and seven was for service calls. The city of Harvey also received a grant from ComEd and Metropolitan America Caucus to purchase two AEDs for city hall. Our fire department, we trained the employees at city hall for CPR, so now they have AED. So if there's a cardiac arrest, they have the resources to assist in that cardiac arrest because. That give the victim another fifty percent of the survival rate for them to have that knowledge and that tool for them after the disposal. And that ends the Harvey Fire Department report. Thank you.
And Chief, if possible, and sometime in the future, I know we trained the employees to CPR. But if we can possibly work, maybe with University of Chicago or Family Christian Nelson. To, or you can South Suburban, to be able to offer a day where people can come in and get CPR certified that are residents. Because we have, you know, some, whether it's young children or seniors, that, that if they have a medical emergency. Or CPR would be of assistance if you would like for them to be trained and prepared. So if you can work on that, that would really appreciate it.
Uh, thank you.
Next, what words?
Good evening, Mayor Clark, members of council, residents of the city of Harvey. I'm here today to provide some updates on work that's been happening within our streets and grounds, facility maintenance and water divisions. I'll begin with the street facility grounds division. First, I'd like to acknowledge the assistance and cleanup effort for our team during the recent filming which took place on one hundred fifty-fourth Street in the downtown area. Team members provided critical support for production crews that began filming in the city on July twenty-first. Our team helped by setting up barricades, offering assistance for many people. It's also a pleasure that help brings something special to our city and our team did a fantastic job ensuring production and speed. Now with the cleanup behind us, we're turning to our attention back to beautification of our city. Crews have resumed their work, terminating coming by wards and were already starting in the fifth ward. We remain committed to keeping the streets and grounds in good condition for all residents. Our water division update. During the last meeting, we've had forty-two meter reeds, we've had ten meter exchanges, we had five hydro backflow checks, we've had ten water shut offs, fifteen water turnouts, we've had no rigs placed. Red cards issued before and no yellow or door hanger for distributing the green match period. As you can see, our water division has been busy with a variety of tasks, ensuring that water services are maintained and that everything continues to run smoothly for our residents. In light of recent events, the department remains dedicated and committed to serve the city of Harvey and its residents. We are focused on. We are focused on being responsive, efficient, and we continue with hard work to maintain the high standards service that this community deserves. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, economic development.
Yeah, good evening, mayors and council members here of the citizens. Uh, my name is David Suarez, I'm the economic development director, and my main responsibility is, um, business development, uh, planning, zoning, and property sales. And on the issue of business development, it's about growing jobs and investment. And so one of the great tools that we have here, economic development, is the Class Eight uh, property tax, uh, uh, abatement program. And I wanted to say, now that we, I've looked at all the applications, we've ever received, uh, we've received thirteen applications already that's over time that we have, and ten are renewals and three are new projects. And we do have one slated for council that's prepared for council, uh, in the coming council meetings, so we look forward to that. We talked about investment in that particular, uh, project, it'd be about one point three million and about eight jobs in this, and taking care of an abandoned building. And that's what we have those programs for, is to attract companies here and we'll look forward to bringing that to council. Um, with planning and zoning, it's really about building quality of life. And you do that by using your zoning code to allow certain businesses to be in certain places, and also to negotiate improvements to the property. And, uh, just in there, zoning clearances, uh, uh, as of end of July twenty twenty-five, we received eighty-nine applications and, um, processed eighty-two. So we're very current on that. At one time, I was way behind, but I'm really caught up. And it's good to be caught up, but again, all of these things take time and energy and, and work, and so, uh, out of those, eighty-nine, eighty-two have been processed, sixty-six have been um, approved, eleven have been denied, and nine are moved in the category of special use permit. And that's where we negotiate and work with businesses to make sure that if they're going to locate a certain spot, they're going to have to make improvements in their facade, the fencing, landscaping, and, and so forth, that make a good quality image i- in our community. So we're excited about working with them. And we have scheduled at least, uh, we received three, two applications that are going to be uh, bringing them forth to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have about another five that are, uh, gearing up. And it takes time to prepare these special use permits, because we're talking about improving the overall site plan, the image, again, we want to see drawings and renderings, and let people know that if they do these certain improvements, then yes, they can get a special use permit to the city. Uh, the other topic I mentioned, the other responsibility is property sales, and it's really, um, quite a challenge. I mean, if you look at what's out there, it's an interesting statistic to know, and I've been tracking this over time, that we have nearly two thousand vacant lots, fifteen hundred abandoned buildings. And of all of those, if you add them all up, ninety-four percent of that are privately owned. And you can see where the problem lies. It is hard for the city to deal with property that we don't own. So how do we deal with that? This is a monumental task. And the answer is, is to work in obtaining control of abandoned properties. To approve it, we can take these abandoned properties and make them ours by working with partners and collaborators, residents who want to deal with their side yard, businesses that want to do, uh, uh, home improvement, uh, 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 people who are flippers, we want to work with all of them. And we work with them by going through a judicial deed, a tax deed, a deed and move foreclosure, and whatever manner we can get to take, again, that property and work with the city in partnership with them. And that is really the goal, that's a long task. And we're not talking about doing a handful a year, we're looking to try to do hundreds, not two hundred. And that kind of system requires building something, a system that we're in the process of doing. I've contacted ten attorneys, received four proposals, and it's about getting really a good attorney to work with you, because a lot of these require court cases. And, uh, we're in the process of doing that. So we're building the system. And in the meantime, you can still apply, and certainly there's going to be, uh, a group of these, uh, uh, properties available to, to the council. And we talk about the sale of city property and obliging private abandoned property under, uh, for, uh, in partnership with other people to take control through the abandonment process. So with that, we do have foreclosures that are pending of property that are city-owned. And, um, really, together, I think we can, really, as partners grow, uh, jobs and investment, uh, improve quality of life, and revitalize our neighborhood through these processes I speak of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the building department.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and the great residents of the city of Harvey. As the director of Building and Inspection Services Department, I have to represent or talk about my report summarizing for our department's activity, activity over the last past month. Our focus remains on daily quality and safety and accountability. The numbers reflect continued productivity and growing demands placed on our team. During the past month, we processed a total of a hundred and five permits. These include forty-four general construction permits, five electoral permits, five plumbing permits, fifteen solar permits, and twenty-two renovation permits. Fourteen permits were not approved due to incomplete documentation or code-related issues, which we closely work with our applicants to resolve. We're also welcoming, we also welcome verified new contractors licenses, reflecting continued growth and the investment in the city of Harvey. As more qualified professionals seek to work in our city, it shows a strong sign that our, that our development is active and expanding. In our monthly report, uh, we thought that it should be beneficial to take a moment to share a critical concern with our community. We have identified disturbing increase in home scamming activities taking place in Harvey. These scams often involve individuals illegally occupying vacant homes using fake leases to falsely claim tenants. In many cases, once these individuals are in property, it becomes very difficult. In many cases, it becomes very difficult to have them removed through a legal channel, through legal shadows. This type of behavior poses a threat to the property owners and the integrity of our neighborhood, so we're asking for help. If you see something suspicious, suspicious activity around a vacant property, such as people moving in without a correct sign, changing logs, claiming to, uh, uh, to be tenants, please report that to the building department immediately. Early reporting is critical so that we can act swiftly and, and legally to protect our community. We are pleased to also announce a new addition to the Harvey Business Community. Please help us welcome the luck station spa located at three six nine East one hundred forty-seventh Street, Suite C. We're excited to see businesses like this that bring life, services, and opportunities to our community, and we look forward to supporting their success. Thank you very much, and this concludes our report.
Thank you. Next, this communication.
Good evening. I'm pleased to provide a brief update from the Communications Department on key developments from the past month. Last month, our city became a filming location for the upcoming Apple TV series Dark Matters. This production brought energy to our streets, involved local businesses, and shined a light on Harvey in a positive way. Moments like these help reshape perceptions and remind the world of our city's unique character and potential, and let them know that we are open for business. Our This Week in Harvey series continues to grow in reach and is becoming a, a reliable way for residents to stay connected to what's happening. Last month, we focused on giving residents a behind-the-scenes look at the Harvey Police Department, Harvey Fire Department, and the pumping station. These features not only highlight progress, but build trust and transparency between residents and public safety personnel. Next month, on the eighteenth, we will host our third Community Solutions Meeting. It's designed to engage residents directly in conversations and search for solutions together. Our goal is to foster productive dialogue between the city and the public. Whether it's national visibility, public safety, transparency, or community dialogue, we are committed to keeping Harvey residents informed, inspired, and involved.
Thank you. Next, uh, HR.
Good evening, I'm the Director of Human Resources. Fifty, fifty-six percent of candidates are seeking important opportunities beyond their existing fields of expertise. So therefore, the Human Resource Department has updated the onboarding process by conducting additional reviews of employee references, performing more thorough background checks, and implementing two rounds of interviews. This current process takes two to three days, but it helps to ensure the qualified employees are selected for the city of Harvey. Despite a recent ten percent reduction in staff, Harvey continues to operate effectively. Human Resources continues to maintain employees by offering benefits, development, and well-being support, resulting in a more skilled workforce ready to serve the community. We're nearing our open enrollment period, which will provide employees opportunity to explore new medical benefits. We successfully completed our summer internship program with the city students, providing hands-on learning about municipal operations. One student learned directly from the city collector about home buying and ownership in the city of Harvey. She stated, "At my age, no one has ever taken the time to show me how to be a homeowner." And she was very grateful for that opportunity. The city students also were granted the opportunity to have a question-and-answer session with Mayor Clark. Several students stated that sitting up and close to a mayor was a chance of lifetime, and they'll never forget that. The mayor answered each and every question and welcomed all to come back and visit him at any time. And if they ever needed a letter of recommendation, he would be more than happy to give it to them. Helping one person may not change the world, but it could change the world for one person. Isn't it good times?
Thank you. Next, we have senior services.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, staff, and residents. The senior, senior service department will be hosting events throughout the city, sharing wellness information, and asking for some advice for our seniors concerning healthy, living, alternative goals for seniors. In light of the, um, changes in our government, uh, senior services feels that we have to be proactive to give more information to our seniors. Therefore, on Tuesday, August twelfth, we'll be, we will be hosting an ice cream social at Jesse Jackson East Building from eleven thirty to twelve thirty. Then we will be hosting a additional ice cream social at Jesse Jackson West Building at one thirty to three thirty. On Thursday, August fourteenth, we will be hosting an ice cream social event at South Suburban YMCA, eleven thirty to twelve thirty. On Thursday, August fourteenth, we will be hosting an annual bingo lunching program here at City Hall from twelve AM, twelve PM to three PM. All seniors are welcome. On Friday, August fifteenth, senior service department will be attending the third ward, community ward meeting at Jesse Jackson East and West Facility, passing out our city literature, listening to the residents concerned. In closing, Wednesday, August twentieth, is our annual seniors with an attitude of gratitude meeting with our seniors at City Hall. Our guest speakers for that event will be the fire department. The subjects of the evening will be dealing with fire safety, SMART, nine-one-one. In closing, we service thirty residents. I would like to add that we as a community must focus on getting ideas for our seniors in the backbones of our community. It's number one.
Thank you. Finally, we have the revenue department.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and residents of the city of Harvey. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today and provide a update on the operations of the city collector's office and my progress with made in serving our The mission of our office is simple, but by to ensure the city's revenue is collected fairly, efficiently, and transparently, so that all the funds entrusted to us are used to improve the quality of the residents and the city. Over the last six months, I've worked diligently to streamline processes, improve customer service, and enhance the accuracy of financial records. I am pleased to report the collection rates have increased. Both improved outreach and more convenient payment options and residents paying for business. We have reduced late payment penalties by focusing on proactive reminders, assisting by returning calls, emails, and a time-sensitive manner. Our office is pleased to implement new digital tools and make payment processes faster and secure and more sustainable, saving both time and sacrificial dollars. I want to emphasize that the improvements are not just about numbers, but they are about trust. Every dollar we collect represents a commitment from our citizens and the responsibilities to safeguard funds and ensure that they are used responsibly. Looking ahead, our priorities will include continuing to moderate our system and rate it efficiently on the city's website, expanding public education by, we have also updated the How Do I tab to make it more where you can see and reach out to departments and, and communication, strengthening communication between departments and residents. I would also like to take time to thank my dedicated staff for professionalism, hard work, and making this possible. I want to thank the mayor for your support and your guidance. And in closing, I just want to say, in what I'm going through, uh, I'm still devastated. Uh, I lost my son last week. And I'm in here. Miss Davis, um, tried to get me not to work, but we have a vision, and we do have a passion. So that's why I get that call from Harvey.
Well, on that note, um, before I get into the rest of it, Mayor, I'm going to express first our condolences again, um, and just to them, love the type of people that we have working for the Harvey, um, for the city of Harvey, for the administration. Honestly, their hard work, they're underpaid. They're underpaid because we only collect fifty-two percent of our taxes. And so, many of them are here because they believe in the vision and the mission of this city. And, um, and I'm grateful, and the residents are grateful as well, um, for the work that all of you did, and the sacrifices that you made. So thank you. So next, on the agenda is Mayor, Mayor Carter. Uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make this as brief as I possibly can. We had a wonderful national night out. Uh, I want to, first of all, when we have these types of events, we, we tend to get these, these same questions of how can we pay for these events? How can we cover the money to pay for these events when maybe ten percent of the employees are laid off, or when something else is going on, or? I don't know where, where these things come from. But what I do know is that we have a, a, a great amount of, of supporters and sponsors who give of themselves, uh, both of their talent and their treasure, uh, so that we can pull off these types of events. Uh, at that particular national night out, we spoke not only about our first responders and police and fire, but we also spoke about, uh, those who serve our country in our forces. And we are grateful for them. So, uh, and we're grateful, once again, for the many people who, who support and sponsor events such as that. Uh, I want to, of course, thank, thank the team. I want to, of course, thank the team. And again, went to add another one, because y'all just keep doing it over and over and over and over again. And the great thing from my perspective is, is that they are doing this with very little to nothing, and they're still making it happen. They're still doing this when people talk about their efforts in a negative way, and they're doing it not for themselves, they're doing it for the city of Harvey, for the residents to be able to recognize, serve events, celebrate certain events, and have a good time. You know what? And that is also a part of the quality of life of the people who live there. So, for those who were able to come out, we gave out some bikes, I think for a toy, provided the bicycles. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, provided, once again, another sponsor, provided the bicycles, and there were some very happy children as a result of it. It was nice to see their smiling faces. So, I'm so glad that we were able to pull that night off without a hitch. We also got some decent coverage, I will say, from one of our people in the media that came out to actually see what was going on. That's a rarity, but we'd love to see more of it. So, if anybody from the media is watching this, we want you out here not just to talk about the negative things that are going on in the city of Harvey, but the positive things that are going on in the city of Harvey, because there are a lot of them. I mean, we just had a shooting in Bronzeville. Five people were injured in Bronzeville. But we don't just talk about the injuries in Bronzeville, we also talk about the building that they're doing in Bronzeville, the positive actions that are going on in Bronzeville. We would like to be weighed with that same, with that same yardstick. So, where you see something, if you got something bad to report, report something good, you know? If you got a negative or something that you don't like, come up with something positive, because I'm sure that you can. It might be difficult for some who engage in negative behavior as a lifestyle, but for everybody else, we can do this, and I know that we can. We can point out problems, but we can offer mindful solutions. But that's what the community solutions meeting is for. And when we have our next community solutions, one of the things we will be talking about is finances, because we want to make sure that people have a better understanding as far as that is concerned, and how this actually works. I honestly believe that the vast, vast majority of people in this city have a really good heart, and they really want to see the city move forward. I honestly believe that those who act to the contrary are doing so out of interest, because they just really honestly just don't know. Now, unfortunately, and fortunately, with government, we do have a certain degree of trust that we have to have in our leaders. And so, at this particular point in time, we're people that have to be trusted. And we are hoping, grateful that many of you, if not most of you, have decided to trust us in our leadership. But for those of you who have a difference of opinion, we want to offer you something. And we're going to offer you an opportunity to come to the table and bring some ideas, some viable solutions. We want you to come to the table and bring viable solutions, because if for some reason you believe that you can do it better, and at times, honestly, there are some people that can, because they have a certain skill set. We're going to open up that door. So, the last time I think I spoke, I offered a dollar break, now we're opening doors. And we're going to open that door for you to walk through and bring your ideas and your skills and your knowledge and your background and your connection to help the city that you save, that you love. Well, we're going to see, because your opportunity is coming, and your opportunity is coming very soon. Every single person that gets up in public comment that has an issue with the city, we want you to become a part of the solution and help to solve that problem. And we're going to do everything that we possibly can to provide you the tools that are necessary to do something. We're going to provide you all of the information that is necessary for you to be able to do something. So, the next time you decide that you want to get up and say something in public comment, hopefully it'll be about positive work that you're doing to help to move the city forward. Because somebody mentioned the words "pull up your sleeves," and we're going to all have to pull up our sleeves in order to make this city better. And I'm looking forward to everyone doing it. Like I said before, and I'm going to continue to say, investors and developers are conservative. Investors and developers are conservative. They do not want to see a city that is so dysfunctional or discombobulated with its own citizenship. They understand financial problems. They even understand issues of violence, believe it or not, because as much violence that takes place in the city of Chicago, people still invest in the city of Chicago. So, it's not about that. It's about them seeing community. And so, what we want to try to do is we want to try to foster that and bring about just that, community. Because when the investors and the developers take a look at us, what they do is, first they look at us from a broad perspective, maybe just the region, maybe they're looking for this midwestern portion of the United States. And then they start to look at what's a good area to go in. Usually, of course, Chicago always pops up, because it's Chicago. But, you know, as many of them have said to me, they have just as much, if not more difficulty in Chicago, doing business in Chicago than anywhere else. So, they look for somewhere else, and they end up seeing a place that is geographically suited, that has the rail, that has the expressways, that has basically everything that it needs, from low-skill, low-skill, medium-skill, and high-skill employees and labor forces. This is what we offer to people. And they look, but then as they come a little closer, they're like, "Lord have mercy," because they see us, us. I didn't say y'all, I didn't say me, they see us, and they see how we're conducting ourselves at times. So, if we can just, once again, I know that we can do it, and I am happy that we can. As Alvin Rogers talked about earlier, we had a wonderful, it's so funny, we had a wonderful meeting with South Suburban College. Did y'all hear him say he's one of those spill the beans and steal the beans?
Yeah.
That is so funny. But, but it's a great day, and we had a really wonderful meeting, and I look forward to, you know what? And this actually, and I'm saying this, it was such a good meeting that this is not just, this is just the beginning of a continued and growing relationship with the college, which is something that we should have done a long time ago. Can I get amen?
Amen.
Okay. So, hopefully, you know, this will be one of those things that'll help us to foster that relationship, because relationships matter. Yeah, I remember the senior interns, I'm glad to hear that they had a good time and experience here. I did absolutely nothing, once again, it wasn't me, that was the team. How many interns was in here?
Ten.
Ten. And I look forward to next year there being more, because it was, at least from their expression, it was an absolutely wonderful experience, and we were glad to have them here. It is, it touches the heart to see young people actually getting off in any shape, form, or fashion. I wish that we had more. This is for the younger people who may end up watching this, and I wish we had more, because we really need you. None of us are getting younger, some of us think that we are, but we're just lying to ourselves. We all get older, and as we are getting older, we need to be investing in those younger people and giving them reason to stay here in our city and giving them opportunity to stay here in our city somewhere. They have blessed me just as much as the city has blessed them. I am pleased to announce that the city of Harvey, and another one, that the city of Harvey, I'll read it to you directly. The Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways is pleased to inform you that your application has been selected for participation in the 2025 Invest in Cook Program, and an official notification is attached to this email. Specifically, the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways is granting the city of Harvey $300,000 for motor fuel tax-eligible design to support the 157th Street Improvement Project, complemented by local funds or other grant sources. Now, this is really important, as many of the grants, first of all, it once again shows that there are people who are willing to trust us with money. So, we're doing a damn thing. And I'm so glad, you know, for everybody that has something to do with that, because it shows that they're willing to trust us with money. And we give the money, and we do with the money what we say we're going to do. That's what we do. You want to know what's happening with the finances? I'll tell you exactly what's happening with the finances. We doing what we said we don't do. So, this particular, this particular project goes to 157th Street. If many of you remember, when I first took office, we shut down 157th Street between Lakewood and Main, correct? Between Lakewood and Main. We shut it down for really good reasons, and we had to, once again, bear the grunt of the negativity and everything, but the reason why it was shut down is because the street was not aligned. While they were, while the state was repairing and widening out 159th Street, trucks started using 157th Street as their alternative route. And because they were using 157th Street as their alternative route, and that street was not designed for that type of traffic, it wore out the street, tore up the street pretty, okay? And some of you, especially those who live in the area, remember some of the very large, extremely large sinkholes that came as a result of it. So, it became, honestly, just a danger, but we didn't have the funds to fix it. And I'm not going to say why we didn't have the funds, because they hate when I say that. Say it, say it, because we was $164 million in debt, because that's what this administration inherited. We didn't have the bonding capacity to be able to afford to float a bond to fix those types of projects, because we had been banned from participating in bonds, and our previous mayor had been banned from participating in municipal bonds for life. So, we couldn't fix it, and since 2019, we have been trying in every way we possibly can to get funds to try to do something. Now, let me go back, let me just say this. Sometimes when I, honestly, when I hit on Eric, and I'm going to call him Eric right now, you know, people are like, "Why you don't hate, why you don't help?" Me and Eric have been friends for God, because I don't even know how long. So, and we cool, okay? But at the same time, while we're cool as individuals, I just didn't agree with him as an administrator, just like some people don't agree with me. So, it just is what it is. But, we get this money, we get this money, and we're going to use this money to help to make the desire to fix this street. So, that's another thing that's going on positive in our city, where people from the outside can see it, and they seem to have no problem with it at all. We do need to do some things as far as our audits are concerned, and we are working on our audits, as some of you have articulated in some of your public comment. We do have an auditor that is working on our audits. We have also taken the time to go meet with the state comptroller to make sure, to be with her team, to make sure that we are on the same page as far as what we're trying to do. The state comptroller's office, at least as far as from what I understood from the meeting, they understand not only the challenges that the city of Harvey's faced, but also the challenges that other communities face as well, as far as trying to get these audits done, and they're willing to assist in whatever way they possibly can. So, we are, once again, we are working on those audits, but we are also proud that we can have a conversation with the state comptroller's office to talk about these issues and figure out additional ways. One of the things I did say during that meeting, that we welcome a forced audit. I know some people try to make it seem as if a forced audit is a bad thing. I really don't see it as a bad thing, because when I was an alderman, I fought for us to have these audits. So, it's not a bad thing to have a forced audit, in my opinion. We need as much help as we can get to try to get those audits done. And if the state comptroller's office is willing to give us that help, well, they're not going to give it to us, because we have to pay it later on, pay it back later on. But if they're willing to provide that assistance that we need to get those audits done, this administration won't do it. It is not even a thing, not at all. So, as we move forward with the auditor that we have, our next audits after that, I honestly hope and pray that they say, you know what, this is what we want to do. Of course, that's when they'll say, "No, I don't want to do it this time," but, you know, it is what it is. But, we're going to keep continuing to work with them and keep continuing to build that Property taxes are property taxes. Every single person in this audience and every person inside of my voice should be bothered by the fact that your taxes are higher because commercial properties don't pay. Your residential taxes are higher because residential properties don't pay. You don't have all the services that you need to have because residential properties don't pay. Excuse me, commercial properties, thank you, don't pay. And for those who think we live in a third, fourth, or fifth world country, we live in that way because the commercial properties don't pay. And what's going to happen to you, at least the majority of, if you don't pay your property taxes? You know what happens to you, but nothing happens to them, and they continue to operate day in and day out and make money off of this community without paying their property taxes and thus allowing Harvey to have its fair share. And that's extremely important. So, we need to move that property tax collection rate up. We agreed in July of last year that there was not going to be a tax increase, that the city of Harvey was not going to impose a tax increase on your property taxes. And we lived up to that commitment. We sure did, and we didn't raise them. Other taxing bodies chose to do so, but we didn't, even though we know we need the money, because we don't believe that you should have to continue to carry this burden. But while you don't have to continue to carry this burden, we need you to help put pressure on some of these businesses that aren't paying their commercial taxes. that are paying their commercial taxes. Some of these businesses that are paying their sales taxes because we need it. I remember, anybody remember Joe Flummer? Joe Flummer from back during Obama, when Obama was running? And, uh, he wanted to know why Obama was gonna increase the taxes on the rich, rich, like he was rich? And then to come to find out, he wasn't rich. Why are you fighting for people who ain't fighting for you? People trying to take money out of your pocket and you continually wanna fight for them as if you have something vested in their survival? If they're not, this is, that's what we gonna call it. We got a potluck community. Everybody gotta bring something to the table. I need some meatloaf over here. I need some collard greens over there. I need some sweet potatoes or some yams that some other folks wanna call it, the bitter my way from. And I need some of that good, that good, good, dressing and potato salad. Everybody gotta bring something to the table. But the commercial properties feel like they know. And then they feel entitled when we decide to ask for what we owe. They should be ashamed of themselves. And some of these, some of these companies are national corporations that do these things in predominantly black communities, but they don't do them in predominantly white communities. They do them in predominantly poor communities, but they don't do it in predominantly affluent communities. They should be ashamed of themselves. And we gonna keep fighting until you pay what you owe. Now, we have some other great things going on. You know, we have some employees and I wanna, I'm gonna look at y'all later on, but I just wanna give a little shout out to the path to those employees. We had some employees come to us, come to this administration with suggestions, suggestions on how to improve the city and how to improve our revenue collection. They came with, they came with solutions. These are employees. They don't live in the city of Harvey. And they came, and they did came in either way. But just because they care so much about the city, they came with suggestions and solutions on how we can do even more and do even better. And some really viable solutions that we are working on right now. I'm not gonna let that cut off the bag, but I'm gonna just let you know that it's happening and we should bring it up to you sometime soon. Um, I talked about the South Major Plan Task Force. Uh, I wanna also thank Rose for the ceasefire. Cause Rose for the ceasefire is out there helping the city of Harvey, uh, with what it does as far as virus prevention is concerned. Uh, and when the most recent events happened, uh, they reached out as well. So I'm so wonderfully appreciative of what they have done, uh, in this community and continue to do. And then the last few things is, yes, we had a filming in the city of Harvey. And another one. And it was great. And they were so appreciative in the way in which they were handled by the staff, by police, by public works, by everybody in the city to make their filming possible. Okay? And I was, uh, on set, that's right, on set, uh, on the day of filming. And if anyone that got to, got a chance to ride through downtown Harvey during the time, a few days before filming or a few days after filming, you got a chance to see what it looked like. And it was, it was wonderful how they transformed and, and, and changed the environment. Uh, so I was, I'm really pleased about that and I'm hoping that they will come back. I, I believe that they will. Um, and, uh, we will be able to, once again, it wasn't embarrassment to the city like some people said. They were happy to be here. They were pleased to be here. And so we were happy to have them. We are looking for an attorney as, as, uh, Caesar Suarez said to help us with property acquisition. This is a kind of a advertisement. If we have any attorneys out there that are interested, please reach out to the city seven zero eight, uh, two one zero fifty three hundred. You can ask for Caesar Suarez or you can ask for our city administrator, Corian Davis, uh, because we need attorneys to help us with property acquisition. It's difficult. A lot of times people think that all of this property that's vacant is owned by the city. It's not. It's privately held properties and then it makes us, it makes it difficult for the city to be able to do something with these properties. So we wanna be able to do so, um, and if we can get some attorneys to, um, give us a call and help, we appreciate it. We are continuing to grow. Bottom line. We're continuing to grow. More and more businesses are coming into the city. Uh, we're, we're, we're dealing with more applications for permits, licenses, uh, contracting licenses and things of that nature. I know there are some who think that, think that, um, businesses are leaving. You're right. Some of them are, but let me tell you why. Besides the fact that some of these businesses don't pay their fair share, which I believe that they should, pay their fair share, and if they go, oh well, cause they have a chance to do it the right way. I remember as I was growing up, I'm gonna call it out. When I was growing up, I used to go to a Chinese food restaurant here in the city of Harvey. Boy, that Chinese food was good. I loved it. And from nineteen, whatever it was, seven, nine, or maybe the eighties, all the way to two thousand nineteen, I sure enough loved eating that Chinese food. And then I became mayor. And we decided that we were going to partner with Cook County Health and Sanitation and start inspecting some of these places. And the one thing that I found out about this Chinese food place is while I really loved their rice, their rice was moving. Yeah. The rice was moving. And not because I was using my fork. It was moving on its own. And so it couldn't continue to do business in the city of Harvey. Remember when the, 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 the Popeye's Chicken thing with the, with the biscuits and the chicken sandwiches was going on? The people was around the corner? We went to the Popeye's on one hundred and forty seventh and Houghton and we found rat droppings. And every other type of thing there. Now, I heard someone say, it's you there? And you stop eating? That's how you, that's how you, that's how you fix that?
They fix the holes.
But? They fix the holes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, they tried to do some things, but they had not been inspected. And that was one of the things. We had no relationship with the Cook County, uh, Department of Health to actually get those inspections done. So as we started doing those inspections, we started finding out some businesses had some problems. And when they had those problems, they had choices. They could fix those problems, which I was preferred, or they could leave. But some people would still rather eat that moving rice cause they wanna say that this administration is running businesses away. I don't understand. It doesn't help anybody. Like I said, when you saying what you're saying, it don't put nobody's food on nobody's table, clothes on nobody's bed, and roofs on nobody's house. All you're doing is styling, profiling, and grassing. For what? So folk can eat moving rice. Cause that's what you obviously want them to do. We are moving forward. We are growing. We are expanding. And it's the, the only sad part that I see about it, but it usually is what happens, is that you can't see it because you're in it. But people from the outside, like Cook County, like the state of Illinois, like the federal government, they see. And they see exactly what we're doing. So once again, I'm proud. Proud to represent the city. I'm proud that I have a council the way that it is. And I know that we can do better and that we will. So, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you. Um, if you would be so kind, um, Alden, to give us, um, um, those proclamations. The names of, of any of the other persons need a proclamation, please let us know so we can get that, um, yeah, or the, yeah, for those who are deceased. And other than that, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, she'll be saying a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion.
Second?
Does a motion, my, the first and the second, my, six, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. It is nine oh nine. Thank you. God bless you. And have a wonderful, wonderful, outstanding, splendiferous, ben-glorious week.